Good evening and welcome to the Allamance Burlington Board of Education, October 22nd Board Meeting. It's nice to have you here and join us for our work. I do want to take just a moment to recognize a few people that are here this evening. Over here at our table, we have Joseph Fanko, who is from Eastern Allamance High School, and he is our student representative this evening, so we welcome you, and we'll hear from you in a little while. I'd also like to recognize Commissioner Gailey, who's here with us this evening. Amy Gailey, the Chair of our Commissioner Board, so thank you for taking time. And also Erica Johnson from our ABAE organization is with us, so thank you for taking time to be here. Did I miss any other elected officials? Apologize if I did. Oh, hey, elected official, would you like to come take your chair? Oh, you're getting your computer worked on.
Could you recognize any one of the school board candidates? When I was running in 2012, Jackie was always, "I didn't know what time it was." She would call out our names, not enough if we arrived to do something special because next month was the election.
Okay. So is there anyone here running for school board that has not been recognized? Oh, I see Linda Kenny over here. You want to wave? Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this time, I would like to call upon Tony Rose. He will lead us in a pledge of allegiance, a moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if the Board has had an opportunity to review the agenda, I have no corrections or replacements. Does anyone else have any remarks regarding the agenda?
We accept the agenda as written.
Take it.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Tony. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. Okay. We have one item on consent agenda this evening. It's in North Carolina.
Point of order.
Oh, I'm sorry. Minutes, sorry. Everyone's had the opportunity to review the minutes. Did anyone note any corrections to our minutes?
No corrections, but my vote will not be for the September 11th meeting. I'll be abstaining from that since I was absent for that meeting.
Okay. So do we need to take that separately?
You're here now. I don't think that's necessary.
What do you mean? Did it note that you were present?
It notes that I was absent in the minutes.
Okay, well, then you can approve the minutes because you're here now when we're approving them.
I withdraw what I say.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. So Tony is the first, Mark's the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. And now we have one item on our consent agenda, the North Carolina Works Career Coach Program. May I have a motion on floor to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make that announcement.
One second.
Thank you. Pam, thank you, Patsy. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. So at this time, I am actually going to start our recognitions, and I would ask that Mark Payne join me down front.
So Mark has served the last four years, I just appreciate serving on our Board, and we just want to extend our appreciation and thanks. He has chosen not to run for reelection this year, but I believe he's going to continue to be engaged in ABSS throughout these years. So on behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to recognize you for the outstanding service, continuing commitment, and unwavering dedication to Allamance County and its children.
Now, we will move to recognitions, which I do believe Mark is assisting with this evening. So I invite Ms. Faulkner to the podium.
So we're really pleased tonight to honor a group of ABSS professionals. We have a couple of groups tonight, and then Jeremy Teeter after me also has another group to honor. I would like to ask our recipients of the North Carolina Global Educator Digital Badge, if you would please come forward. We have seventeen honorees.
Wow.
East Lawn Elementary, Elon Elementary, Smith Elementary, and South Graham Elementary. Please come forward.
Congratulations.
Very cool.
So back in September 2011, the North Carolina State Board of Education formed a task force on global education to make sure that students in North Carolina are going to be competent and ready to meet the global needs when they become professionals out in the workforce. So the Global Education Task Force decided on credential ideas for teachers to earn. It's a voluntary credential. It's a professional credential. They have to complete a hundred hours of professional development, or ten CEUs. Awesome. That's great.
See, I'm going to be in the picture.
So each candidate must work with his or her principal to ensure that what they're doing as a global educator will meet all the credential guidelines, and then they have to do a capstone project, which has to be approved by the State Board of Education. And that, once that capstone project is completed, it becomes in a bank of archived professional opportunities that everybody can see. So these ladies, I think there are sixteen of our seventeen honorees here tonight. We had one who's sick and couldn't make it, but these folks have completed that voluntary professional credential, and they deserve our biggest applause. So we have a certificate for each one, and if you'll come and meet Mr. Payne here, he will be glad to present that to you. The first one is Sarah Clark from East Lawn Elementary.
Congratulations. Want me to speak?
Jessica Fur from East Lawn Elementary.
And Mr. Fur.
Maggie Derrick from Elon Elementary. Nikki Montgomery from Elon Elementary. Lisa Hyatt, Elon Elementary. Lisa Frazier, Marvin B. Smith. Mary Alice Faust, Smith Elementary. Lorraine Harris, Smith Elementary. Marissa Hewitt, Smith Elementary. Kim Makumson, Smith Elementary. Elizabeth Mize, Smith Elementary. And Kate Spoon from Marvin B. Smith was unable to be here tonight, so we'll make sure she gets her certificate. Connie Vickers from South Graham Elementary. Not here? Okay. I'm sorry, what did I say? Smith, you're right. I picked up the wrong stack. Sorry, Ms. Vickers. Angie Rife, South Graham Elementary. Georgia Morrison, South Graham Elementary. Shay Turney, Smith, South Graham Elementary. And Angela Windley, South Graham Elementary. And I believe we have some principals and family and cheerleaders in the audience. If you would please stand. Next, we would like to honor our Student Support Services Professionals of the Year for 2018. If they would please come forward, and they are Ashley Price from Andrews Elementary, Karen Graham from Southern Allamance High School, and Casey Hill from Hall River Elementary. So these professionals were named by their peers, nominated and named by their peers, and selected for outstanding professional dedication to students and staff for Allamance Burlington Schools. And I'd like to read you just a little bit about each one and why they were nominated and what makes them so special. So Ms. Price, she was actually last year at South Graham Elementary, and this year she's at Andrews. So Ms. Price, she is the epitome of what a school counselor is and should be. She is truly there for all of our students and families. She is involved in almost every aspect of our school and performs many duties, including that involve students, teachers, administrators, parents, and our community partners. She works diligently to improve the culture of our school by modeling positive attitude for both children and adults. Ms. Price, congratulations to you. Next, we have Karen Graham. She's our School Nurse of the Year. Ms. Graham's clinical assessments are always thorough, and she goes above and beyond to connect her students and families to the resources they need. She takes an invested interest in not only our students, but our faculty and community as well. Her positive attitude and friendly demeanor make her approachable, while her professionalism and ability to retain confidentiality make her trustworthy. Ms. Graham, congratulations to you as the Allamance Burlington School Nurse of the Year. And next, we have Ms. Casey Hill. She is the School Social Worker of the Year for Allamance Burlington Schools. Let me tell you about Ms. Hill. Her caring relationships with students, families, and staff members have made her an essential part of our staff. Respected by her school social work colleagues across the district, she's often sought out to share her knowledge about local community resources available for families, as well as agencies, protocols, and procedures. Ms. Hill is dedicated and committed to the well-being and success of our students. Ms. Hill, congratulations to you as our ABSS School Social Worker of the Year. What I think you'll notice in the comments that were scored by the nominating committee is that each one of these folks is an important part of their school staff, and the schools can't function without these professionals. Students can't function, and our staff members can't function, and our families can't function. So congratulations to you, and I think we may have some principals and some cheerleaders and family members in the audience. If you would please stand up. Congratulations. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that we, the public, have no idea what all they do, and I'm so proud of you guys.
I think Mr. Teeter from Finance has some recognitions to follow. Can I help you if I hand this out?
Emmett's going to.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So Mr. Alexander is going to help me this evening. There's a special bookkeeper that is determined that he's going to hand her plaque tonight, so that's how Emmett's gotten this job tonight. So Chair Gant, Board Members, Dr. Benson, I'm here this evening to recognize a handful of our lead secretaries who perform so many functions for our schools and for our children that I can't even begin to list them all. So as I came here and I've gotten to know these individuals, I'm just utterly impressed at what they do every day, just to hold the schoolhouse together, and I know that we certainly appreciate the relationship that we have with them in the Finance Department. So these nine individuals have been engaged in coursework for which they've had to travel all over the state of North Carolina to complete. And so through the North Carolina School Business Officers Association, these ladies have taken coursework in accounting, finance, business law, ethics, and just a whole host of subjects in order to earn a certification through our organization. And so this is the highest certification that you can earn in the state of North Carolina to be a school bookkeeper. And so these are, these nine ladies are the first in our school district to complete this, and I am thrilled that they have done that. And it just, it just helps us to better serve our students and to help keep us, keep us compliant, and it reduces our stress at the central office level, too, for them to be this well-prepared. And I know that in each of these ladies, our principals think very highly of them for the support that they're able to provide them on a daily basis. I know that a couple of them have got some things going on, so some of them wear data manager hats and reception hats, and so I know that Linda Barefoot from the Allamance Burlington Early College at ACC is working on report cards this evening to make sure that those get out on time, so she could not be with us this evening. The next one I'd like to recognize is Kathy Beck with Cummings High School. She just could come forward. The next one that we wanted to recognize is Lynn Bell with Sea Tech, and she cannot be here this evening. She, a lot of people are in the same boat that she is, and she realized she needed heat this morning, and it didn't work when she turned it on, and so she's, she is meeting with her HVAC person to get that situated this evening. The next one I know has got some sinus stuff going on, thanks to the weather, and that's Stephanie Johnson. And so as you can see, these are busy ladies that hold their work and their house to go, even when they're sick. The next one I would like to recognize is Jennifer Langley with Elon Elementary, who I believe I saw her come in. Stephanie Ray with Southern Middle School. And is Velika Royal here? Okay, Velika Royal with Black Street Academy, oh, Ray Street Academy, excuse me. Kim Stewart with Sylvan Elementary. And last but not least, Sarah Wright and Barry with Woodlawn Middle School. So again, I just can't thank these ladies enough for everything they do on a daily basis. They wear, they wear a lot of hats, and they're probably some of the busiest people that we've got in the district. So again, so just want to extend them one final round of applause for everything that they do for us.
Thank you, ladies. At this time, I'd like to take just a moment to recognize Commissioner Bob Bird, who has joined us. Thank you for being here this evening. And also to remind everyone that the Board Meeting can be seen on Spectrum Channel 5 and 10 every Wednesday evening at 7:00 PM and every Saturday, or every Saturday at 10:00 AM. At this time, we are going to move to public comment, and I currently have two requests for speaking. I do want to make just a couple of reminders that you have a three-minute time limit. There will be a clock placed up on the Board, and when you hear the alarm, we ask that you wrap up your comments. And that any personnel issues that you may consider speaking to, we'd ask that you do not, because those are protected under personnel law. So at this time, I have Laquanda Ty Slinger, who would like to speak. And when you come to the podium, if you'd be kind enough to state your name, just for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Laquanda Ty Slinger. I have three students enrolled in Allamance Burlington School District, and my issues pertain to two of my students who are enrolled in Southern Allamance Middle School. We've had to contact Southern Allamance Middle School, and I've also contacted the Superintendent's Office a couple of times this year to discuss concerns that we've had with bullying, intimidation, displays of passive-aggressive behavior, and racial discrimination directed toward our children. We are deeply concerned about our children's safety while at school and their ability to attend a school and learn in a conducive environment. Our children have a right to obtain a meaningful education in our public school system, and the district is failing at their duty to provide them with an environment that is safe, fair, and equal. Since the beginning of the school year, our children have been called racial slurs, been placed in unreasonable apprehension of fear, been provoked by symbols that incite violence, and have encountered passive-aggressive behavior from other students. In return, our students have relied on us to communicate with the school and have also reacted against the majority by protecting themselves from continued forms of bullying, condemnation by the school administrators, or racial intimidation, as we, as parents, are at a stalemate. The school administrators took over two weeks to investigate allegations of a racial slur being directed at our daughter, and even after investigating, the disciplinary action was to chew the two students out and send them back to class. Our daughter was told to come forward and inform a teacher or administrator if this happened in the future. However, we did inform the school, and their delayed reaction and attention to the matter only forces us to believe that this type of behavior is condoned. Students are coming to school with Confederate flag keychains as a method of intimidation. The principal informed me that the Confederate flag is not prohibited by the dress code, and students can come to school displaying a symbol that we see on the news every day that is inciting violence, riots, and creating separation and exclusion. Southern Allamance Middle School speaks about inclusion of all students and intolerance of racial discrimination. However, their actions thus far do not leave us with that impression. We will not apologize for raising our children to be proud and to represent that, you know, what their heritage is, and we're just urging that, you know, we consider explicitly banning Confederate flags in the schools, and also to include the minority of our district's school age population so that they can feel safe and as if they're working to protect them in their interests. In addition, we urge the school board to look into what is actually going on in some of the schools and create more training opportunities for school administrators on how to manage a large student body population that consists of a majority that has been made to feel superior, privileged, and as if black people don't matter, and will not react to their antics. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I do want to let you know that typically the Board does not respond, but we will certainly address it with a superintendent. But thank you for coming this evening. All right, Erica Johnson with ABAE is here this evening.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Benson. I stand here on behalf of Allamance Burlington Association of Educators. First, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to find fair and feasible and reasonable ways to accommodate certified as well as classified in making up hours for the inclement weather. Second, I want to thank you for your efforts in educating the community on how crucial the school bond is for our students and our district. Lastly, I'd like to take the time to acknowledge our victory in keeping Hillcrest under local control. As you stated, Dr. Benson, they cannot do it any better than we can. For far too long, our communities and schools have suffered trauma, instabilities, and imposed by poverty and racism. Our students deserve resources and stakeholder-centered solutions, not already filed proposals, for example, achievement school districts in Detroit, Tennessee, and New Orleans that hand more public dollars over to private institutions. Our public school students, parents, and educators innovate every day. We ask that you help us support Carver Heights, which has been the school chosen in Wayne County. The NEA way is we are in this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. At this time, we'll close the public comment, and we will move to Administration and Human Resources. And I believe, Mr. Alexander, you have several things for us this evening.
Good evening, Board Chair Gant, Board Members, Dr. Benson. The first item that we have on the agenda is the updated copy of the Burlington Police Department School Resource Officer MOU. This has been reviewed by our attorney. I'm asking for approval so that we can have the appropriate signatures. All parties may receive their copies. This is the last MOU that we needed to close everything out, and it was under the same format, just for consistency purposes.
A move we accept the MOU as presented by staff?
Second.
Thank you. You have a first and a second. Are there any questions or discussion for Mr. Alexander?
I just want to make a statement. Last week, him and I attended the School Board Association Law Conference, and one of the agenda items was in reference to the MOU with law enforcement. Would it be possible, even with this vote, our attorney was also present at that conference? It was quite informative, and it had some details that I would like to make sure that we have specifically addressed. Is there any way, when you reviewed it, Adam, were you aware of all of the knowledge or information we obtained last week, and are you assured that this current one adheres to what was provided?
I am, but, but they're two different things, and I think what you're talking about is the overarching MOU that governs our relationship with all law enforcement entities. That was entered into a couple of years, and I do think it probably would not be a bad idea to bring everyone together and to talk about that and refresh that. I don't have any specific issues with it, but it is, and you're right, there was some really interesting conversation at this conference about the important relationship between the school officials and law enforcement officials. What Mr. Alexander's presenting is a straightforward, here's how many officers, here's how much we're going to pay, so I'm entirely comfortable with this document today.
Okay. Thank you.
Like what Ms. Simpson, it was really, we met some other leaders from other counties that we see a lot of things that we would like to see us discuss possibly and bring them here to like an open forum, training with all of us, and I'm just, one of the biggest things they were talking about was our relationship between us and law enforcement. And I know you are pro on that. The sheriff has really spoke very highly of you. And just want to make sure that we're getting every ounce. There was even another county, I believe it was Brunswick, that had a SRO at every one of their schools, elementary, everything, which is my goal, and just very, just how important it is. And I know I had mentioned about an SRO principal training with Mike Anderson that's out of DPI is real important, and we also saw William Lester, who's the Deputy Director of Juvenile Services with Department of Public Safety, and I would really like for him to be part of that training when it talks about how they're doing deferring things and how they're really making a difference in juvenile crime, because we all know the age is going to go up to 18 December 1 of next year, which is going to benefit a lot of things, but it's going to really put a lot of other kids into the juvenile crime system instead of adult, which I'm all for that. And so just, just dropping that again about that training, just really hope that's going to be scheduled soon, this October.
So thank you, Pam. So we'll talk with Dr. Benson. It may be talking around this at work session, along with Adam and his recommendation for the overarching MOU. We do have a first and a second on the floor for this particular MOU. Any further questions or discussions for Mr. Alexander on this particular MOU? Great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. Thank you. And I believe you have some gifts for us this evening.
Yes, ma'am. We have four gifts that are awaiting approval. Ian Yoder Elementary School has received a donation of $5,873.35 from their PTA. This donation is earmarked for digital resources. The next that we have is Graham Middle School. They've received a donation of $1,000 from the Graham Enhancement Community. This is earmarked for the special needs classroom and students. Audrey Garrett Elementary School has received a donation of $1,000 from Ms. Mindy Vaughn of Pataskala, Ohio. This is earmarked for the purchase of a tree for the memorial garden. Alexander Wilson has received a donation for $1,000 from the Alexander Wilson has received a donation for $1,000 from the Alexander Wilson PTO. The donation is here for science workshops in the spring for all grade levels.
If it's the pleasure of the board, we'll take all these gifts as one. Okay? Is there a first on the floor to accept the gifts?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second? Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions or further discussion?
What is the enhancement? I think it was Graham Middle, maybe? I've never heard of that. Enhancement Foundation or Committee or?
I'm not familiar with that committee out of Graham, but it sounds lovely.
It's not like they're picks off the ground.
We can certainly find out. It's a nice gift from them. Okay? So, there's a first and a second on the floor. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Very much. Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we are going to move to Dr. Bost with our school improvement plans. This was a lot of material, so turn the floor over to you, ma'am.
Good evening, Chair Gant, members of the board, Dr. Benson. I want to start first by just reviewing our timeline for school improvement planning process and, most importantly, your approval. It's partially driven by state statute around school improvement planning processes, but also our schools designated as low performing in North Carolina, they have a particular timeline that they must adhere to as well. So, combining those two items, in addition to the timing of our board meetings, so that we don't have to call a meeting, the timeline that we're following lines up best with all of those requirements. So, from here on out, given that timeframe, at the November boardwork session, we will be requesting that you approve our plans, and then we have to send them to the Board of Education, the 13 schools designated as low performing, and then we, December 5 is the final deadline for ensuring that all of our plans are posted to the ABSS website, and the 13 plans for the schools designated as low performing will also be posted on the NCDPI website. Start with a slide that was at the end of the presentation at the boardwork session, and I think it belonged at the beginning, because this helps explain some of the acronyms that we use in the school improvement plan. I also wanted to mention that I've received a couple pieces of feedback from the board, one of which actually was provided at the work session around the use of the word tracker. And you'll note that these haven't, we haven't changed any of that language in the plans that were posted to this agenda, and that's because the school has to consider whether or not, what they're going to do with that feedback. But I did want to further explain what a data tracker is, because when I went back, I realized that was what it was referencing, and certainly not the tracking of students. It's actually the reverse. They're tracking their own progress. I have a sample copy, if anyone would like to take a look at it. It's the terminology we use across the district. The students use that terminology as well, so if a team opts to keep that language in there, then we're going to ask that they clarify that, what it really is in the plan. As a reminder, in addition to the school improvement plans that we are finalizing, there are support teams in place to provide extra layers of support aligned to the school improvement plan and based on their data, not only academic data, but data around the social-emotional learning of our students. Our plans look different. We have two different web-based programs that are used. Our schools designated as low performing use NC Star as their web-based tool, and these are the four major items that NC Star addresses, including a needs assessment, 12 key indicators that are assessed so that they can identify priority goals, and then it moves into the practices, the strategies, and the monitoring, of course. They get state monitoring also. The other 23 schools use the data, web-based program IO Insights, and this is what their process looks like. By November 7, by the time you see them on November 7, the social-emotional goal that is missing from many of the plans currently will be in there. I shared at the boardwork session that we were awaiting baseline data for that goal. For the first time ever, we're gathering data district-wide to capture data points around things like whether or not students feel like they belong, and because we know that that contributes to a lot of factors, and so that will be built in by November 7. In addition, I did receive some feedback, actually yesterday, about ensuring that attendance indicators are a part where needed, and that would be in the other goal, that's where that belongs, for schools to whom it's relevant. All of our school improvement goals are aligned to our ABSS evidence-based practices. I know you can't read this, but they are on our website in lots of places, and it's just a real attestation to what we're doing, being tightly aligned to what we know will work and not just ambiguous and arbitrary strategies. Also, in order for us to move forward, we have to have strong goals that have these characteristics, and you've heard this before, a SMART goal has to be specific, measurable, actionable, relevant, and time-bound. On the templates that you have online, you have the first column, the third column, and the action steps and the goals, the target goals, plus the action steps and the data set used to measure. But I wanted you to see all the things that within the web-based tool, schools are doing in their school improvement plan, because it's web-based and cumbersome to show you all of that. And then one important component in it, which you can't read either, but this is an example of one really important tab within the web-based software that has them, the school improvement teams go in and monitor how well they're doing, because we can't wait until March to figure out that what we're doing isn't working. One of the most important parts of continuous improvement in ABSS is the professional learning opportunities and ensuring that they are aligned to what our teachers need, and we continue to try to do a better job of that with input from our teachers and principals. And so, I will share the video that we couldn't get to work last time. But before that, since this is the final slide, I'll take any questions you might have.
Not a question, just a statement about the testing program. Dr. Benson, in his weekly updates, sent us a website from EDNC that shows, there's a dot for every school and what score they did and how they did on the North Carolina's final EOG, EOCs. And this, each dot, it has a different color, and so you can match it up with A, B, C, D, and F and go across. And the nice thing is, you can change the parameters of that. You could look at, currently, it's 80, 20, 80% achievement, 20% growth. You can change the growth and the achievement and see how that would change the scores, and also see the level of poverty in each school, and you can pull it out by separate counties, too. So, you can pull us out and you look at all our schools and how they're doing, and you can change the parameters around it. It's very educational, so I encourage you, if you haven't already done it, to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, it is a lot of material, so I hope that the board will continue to review and reach out to Dr. Bost and her team if you have questions regarding any particular area within plans. So, if we're going to watch a video, I believe?
Can I just ask you a question, Dr. Bost? How often do you and/or our Director of Secondary Education, how often do they go, refer back to this in assessing the progress of each school based upon the items in the school improvement plan?
So, it happens in a variety of ways based on what we identify as the school's needs. Most often, it is embedded and layered in the support that we're providing to the schools, so when we go out and we meet with them, with their support teams, or provide, go attend a school improvement team meeting and provide feedback there, but...
Embedded, and you used a fancy phrase, it is embedded in something, something. Just tell me, when Ms. Johnson goes out to the school, Ms. Johnson, how does Ms. Johnson look at this and say to the principal, you are on track, or this is not working, let's reassess?
So, she's well-versed in the goals for that school that they've set and the strategies, and she's working with the school to make sure that what they have said, that they're going to, how they said they're going to measure it, they're on track with that. So, the portion of the plan that says what data sets we're using to measure it, she's consistently having conversations with them about that.
And I also noticed that each school has the autonomy, I guess, to use whatever resources, instructional resources. Have you had an experience that if those resources were applied throughout the district versus each school using something for math or something for language arts, is there, is it worth us looking to see if we should be consistent in the educational resource materials that they have?
So, an example of that is actually your approval of the IMAGEN resources. We had data that suggested that it was effective when used with fidelity with a large number of students at two of our schools, and now we're looking at it across 14 schools, and that could lead, if all goes well, to what you're describing, a district-wide implementation, and certainly we can get better pricing when we do that, and we would like to make advantage of that, too.
But as it is right now, each principal, each school gets to decide what they want to use?
They provide the leadership for that. And we advise as necessary.
Hey there, ABSS! This year, on our district early release days, we are excited to continue our collaborative conversations around ways to make the Core Four even more modern, innovative, and nurturing for every ABSS student. For the past couple of years, we have engaged in professional learning experiences focused on grade level and content standards. The rigor of these standards and the best pedagogical approaches used to teach and assess these standards. Last year, teachers, principals, assistant principals, and district leaders came together to examine how we might further enhance our Core Four framework to personalize learning for every student in ABSS, which led to the Vision of Mine. This year, we will continue conversations aligned to Goal One of our strategic plan, exemplary classroom teaching and instructional leadership. At the center of Mine is the student represented by a fingerprint, which serves as a reminder that each student is unique. The Vision of Mine is personalizing learning for each student in ABSS. Making the Core Four Mine empowers each student to be an integral part of their own unique learning experiences so that they can say, it is my future, my learning, just for me. Teachers in ABSS have begun this transition to personalized learning by using evidence-based instructional practices that allow every student to demonstrate mastery of the grade level or content standards. As educators, we do this by ensuring we provide clarity and appropriate feedback around the rigor of the standard so that every student is actively engaged in what they need to know, understand, and do. Making the Core Four Mine is about creating flexible learning spaces where students have multiple opportunities to demonstrate mastery through a variety of pedagogical approaches as well as performance measures. Making the Core Four Mine is educating the whole child, not just the academic child. Making the Core Four Mine is building positive relationships and being culturally responsive to the needs of each student. Making the Core Four Mine is an exciting journey that will require our continual support of each other along the way. That is why we are thrilled to announce that on the early release days this year, December 5, February 6, and April 3, teacher leaders from all over the district will be leading professional learning sessions to help each other make the Core Four Mine. This is a pivotal time in ABSS, and we look forward to learning along with you this year. We know we will have achieved our vision in ABSS when every student can say, this is mine, my future, my learning is just for me.
This is mine, my future, my learning is just for me.
This is mine, my future, my learning is just for me.
All right, this is mine, my future, my learning is just for me.
This is mine, my future, my learning, it is just for me.
Okay.
This is mine, my future, my learning is just for me.
This is mine, my future, my learning is just for me.
This is mine, it's my future, it's my learning, just for me.
This is mine, my future, my learning is just for me.
Dr. Minus, is that you? Is that your voice?
No, that was my voice.
It sounded like you.
That was Lisa Thompson.
It sounded like you.
Thank you, Dr. Bost. I'm sure the board will continue to review and check in as needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Dr. Benson is going to review the board retreat.
Were you going to drive? Thank you, Madam Chair. The board held a mini-retreat on September 28, and we had some wide-ranging discussions, and I want to just take this opportunity to provide a little bit of a summary of what came out of that meeting and some direction to me as we move into the remainder of this school year in terms of some goal areas. So, first of all, we spent a little time talking about what we value as an organization. These are questions that I have asked pretty much every group of individuals that I've interacted with since I've arrived, and I've been keeping track of the number of times that folks have said certain things. And so, I put all of that into a Word, I'll create a Word cloud, and I think it's really interesting. We've got five terms, values, that rose to the top that I think we actually should be very proud of as a school system. That we value culture, and culture is just critically important in terms of advancing the mission and achieving goals within an organization. Excellence, we're not going to be satisfied with the status quo. We're going to look for that next level of achievement and try and figure out how to get there. Integrity, and very simply put, we're going to do what we say we're going to do. Trust, we're going to trust each other in that effort. I think it's important to reinforce what Dr. Bost said in the presentation, or actually it was in the video, about us working together to get those positive outcomes for our young people, and to be respectful, that we value respect, and no matter what we're dealing with, there's absolutely no reason that we can't treat each other with respect. Not that we always going to disagree or agree, but we can do that in a respectful manner. The board identified the following priority focus areas for me as a part of my transition into ABSS. I had an opportunity to meet with each individual board member and talked about the kinds of things that we would want to try to accomplish in the coming years. We put those all up on chart paper. Each board member got five sticky dots to pick five things that they thought were the most important things, at least at this point moving forward, and these are the five that rose to the top. Student outcomes and school performance, which absolutely is at the top of our list. We've talked about that in numerous meetings since my arrival. We have some wonderful things going on in our schools across the division. We've got some work to do, and I appreciate the feedback from our education association in recognizing, getting Hillcrest off of that shortlist of takeovers and that we've got some work to do there, but we're going to do that work, as well as our 13 schools that are on that low-performing list. Curriculum implementation and use of time, ensuring that we're delivering a guaranteed viable curriculum and that we're using our time efficiently and effectively. years, two primary issues here that we're dealing with, about 20 years of deferred maintenance and growth, growing at about 2% a year, but we're, we're about 800 seats short of what our needs are at the high school level. We know we need to address those two things. We need a comprehensive capital management plan in order to be able to, to do that, and of course, the resources to, to do that, construction, renovation. Communications, focusing on lots of different ways that we communicate, both internally and externally. And then leadership development and accountability, an opportunity for, to help grow leaders within the school system. Teachers, building-level leaders, leaders across the board, because regardless of what your responsibility is in the, in the organization, there's an opportunity to provide, provide leadership. So keeping those five things in mind, I have done a little bit of a realignment to our cabinet and created a little bit, we think, stronger line of sight through curriculum and instruction into the, into the school. So most notably, we have Revanda Johnson and Dr. Maynes assuming the roles of Chief Secondary Officer and Chief Elementary Officer. You know, we've had an organizational structure that, that kind of had some, some pockets in terms of distribution, and what we're trying to do is just create a clear line of sight, which is critically important in an organization to, to ensure that vision, mission, and goals are being executed consistently. So that's part of it. We also expanded the number of folks that are participating in, in cabinet to include technology. There's hardly an area of our school system that we, we talk about trying to bring about some improvement that doesn't potentially have something to do with technology in our, in our organization. So we want to make sure that we have a seat at that table on a weekly basis. Also, our, our folks that are in charge of our exceptional children, there's an area there that we need to have some continued focus. We've, we've got some gap data that we really need to address. We need to have those folks sitting at the table. And then support services. If you think about the wide variety of support that we need to provide, and we heard this a little bit earlier this evening, in terms of social work, school counselors, school nurses, those wraparound services are critically important in helping our young people be successful in our schools. So we want to make sure that we've got a seat at the table there as well. We also, and we realize the board, we can't read this, they're, they're available though online. We updated job descriptions for all of the cabinet members so that we're very clear about what the expectations are, each one of the cabinet members, and what their responsibilities are moving forward. In terms of curriculum, we are really focused on a balanced curriculum, both in mathematics and in literacy. And we talked about the key components of, of those. In literacy, phonemic awareness, phonics, which tend to be more of a K3 kind of focus, but then word study, vocabulary fluency, comprehension, and critical writing. Basic elements that we would expect to find in literacy instruction across the division in every classroom, regardless of where that classroom is, is located. And again, as, as our students get older, we'll see more focus on the upper ends of that word study, vocabulary fluency, comprehension, and critical writing, and working on reading in that, that K3 in terms of phonemic awareness and, and phonics. I think it's important to understand that those elements don't go away, they simply shift in the amount of time that we're spending with them in classrooms across the division. Word study is just as important at the high school level as it is at the elementary level, and we'll provide an example of that in just a minute. And then in terms of mathematics, making sure that we have a balanced math diet. Computational procedural fluency are, are important, but you can't spend all of your time there. Students need to understand conceptually what's going on in mathematics, and then they need to be good problem solvers, and they need an opportunity to solve problems that don't necessarily look like every problem that they've already solved. We're, want to be certain that they can actually apply something to a new, a new situation. Want to point this out because it is, it is critical to how we ask our young people to kind of organize that information. Experts are not extraordinary, and this is, I think this is really interesting, that experts are only experts in the things that they have studied deeply. If you ask an expert to remember some random set of, of facts, they don't remember them any better than anybody else remembers them. And so it's important that we help our students develop that conceptual level of understanding so they have some hooks to hold this information together for them as they're moving into some of our high-stakes testing. And that we need to focus on learning as thinking and moving beyond basic knowledge and recall. I think folks have heard me use this example a number of times, but if you ask Google what year the United States entered World War I, Google will say 1941. If you ask Google why nations go to war, Google will say, well, I'm sorry, I can't help you with that. So we want to make sure that we're moving beyond basic knowledge and comprehension in classes all across the division, that we're focused on application, analysis, synthesis, and evaluation. There are folks in the research field that would call that the rigor divide, that you've got to get out of that, that, that basic recall level and into application analysis, which is, you know, actually more engaging for young people in any case. So great, kind of one graphic slide that I, I like that, that pulls some of that together. We want our kids to be authentically engaged, not just compliant, not just doing what we're asking them to do in classrooms, but they're cognitively engaged in what's going on. And that when we ask questions, they're at higher levels, application, analysis, synthesis, and evaluation, the level of engagement in the classroom improves. And again, we want kids to be thinking as they're in the classroom, not simply telling us back things that we have, we've talked to them about. And we've heard a little bit about this, I just want to throw those up there again. There is an art and science to teaching. We're, we're not suggesting that we want to tell everybody about the art side of, of that. That's the, the creative piece that our teachers do an exceptional job with. There's a science piece of it, though, that we know that certain strategies in the classroom have high effect sizes in terms of, of return. And we want to make sure that we are using strategies in the classroom that will get us positive outcomes. So here's a little mini lesson that we did. Board members already participated, as did cabinet, so you can't participate this time. Pentatonic scale might seem not familiar to the folks, right? And so we'll use a little word study to take it apart. Penta means five. Tonic. Tone, right? Pentatonic. So a five.
It is not the vocal group, just so you can all know.
Well, that's okay. We got it, right? It's a five-note, it's a five-note scale, okay? Now, if I'm in a music class, I could remember that, right? And, and they could ask me that question on a test, what's pentatonic scale? And I can say, it's a five-note scale, and then I'd kind of be done with it. It, it's very powerful in the study of music because a pentatonic scale is a scale upon which it's very easy to improvise. And so if we're asking our young people to do things like improvise solos, this gives them a comfort level that they're able to, to do that. And the thing that's kind of interesting about the five notes, you can play them in any order that they want, and they sound great. So you move from basic knowledge and recall to an application and analysis, and at some point, perhaps our young people are writing their own improv in, in music, whether it's a strings class or any other instrument that they might be, they might be playing. Okay, develop and operationalize a methodology to work with the county to jointly manage capital improvement projects. I think this is critically important as we move, as we move forward. If those resources are available to us, we have to be very transparent about the, the order and the manner in which we're going to execute all of those projects that are on that list. And we are very much, excuse me, advocating for a, a way to do that that would be collaborative across organizations within, within our community. So what do you get out of that? Jointly manage CIP plans, allow for a systematic evaluation of all potential projects, you can stabilize debt and consolidate projects to reduce borrowing costs. They're a great public relations and economic development tool because they tell your community what you're willing to invest in your community. A focus on preserving infrastructure while ensuring efficient use of, of public funds. Just because we have older facilities, that doesn't mean that we, we can't make them work well for us. We just need to take care of them. And the thing about capital investments is, and I've said this before as well, pay me now or pay me later, and if you pay me later with capital improvement, you're going to pay more because once systems start to fail, they impact other systems within the facility. And then an opportunity to foster cooperation in, among departments and ability to inform other units of government of, of priorities. And then, we also talked about developing and implementing a multi-year communication plan that would include goals and key performance indicators, a strategic choice of communication platforms. Folks like to get their information in lots of different ways, and we need to make sure that we're using those, those channels in ways that are, really help us get the, the word out, but also be able to collect information from our stakeholders. Engaging dynamic content, and then, of course, using our, using mobile technology because folks are not tied to a desktop anymore. We had a really wonderful presentation this morning at Hillcrest with one of the Harlem Globetrotters showing us a little bit of his ball handling skills, but also talking about bullying. He, he polled the third through fifth graders in the audience, and he asked how many of them had a device, whether it be a, a phone, or a tablet, or whatever it is that they could have access to. And pretty much every hand in the, in the, in the room went up. So thinking about that mobile technology and how we can leverage that as a part of a communication plan would, would be important for us as an organization as well. And that concludes my summary. Madam Chair?
Thank you. Board members, anything to add or question Dr. Benson on? We were all there.
Well, I mean, we, we discussed a lot of it at the work session, we don't need to rehash, but I just wanted to say thanks to Dr. Benson. I know that board, you know, a lot of these things we discussed about in the interview process, and, and we kind of put a lot on him early, and particularly with some of the urgencies around needing to address the issues with academic achievement and some of the academic outcomes that we're, that we've been struggling with. And so I just wanted to say thanks. I, I think you jumped on these things a lot quicker than maybe you thought you were, and this is very responsive to that. I just want to thank you for that, and look forward to, to what's, what these changes are going to mean in those areas for improvement.
At the work session, Brian sits beside me, well, we all kind of move around, and he wrote a note on my paper, he said, he is so awesome. It's when you were presenting all this, and I said, man, can you imagine him as a teacher? And I just really think it's cool that you go into a school and teach a class because I know your heart of you is a teacher, and that's a big deal, and I really appreciate that.
Well, thank you for the update to the community. I think it's important. And would you like to be first this evening for board superintendent comments so we can hear from our student, or would you like to wait?
If, if that's such a pleasure, board, absolutely. Joseph, you ready? You're coming up here. So let me read a little bit about Joseph. You can come on up to the, to the podium, we'll get your presentation up. So Joseph Anka is a senior at Eastern Alamance High School. He's also a proud product of South Meban Elementary and Woodlawn Middle Schools, a true Alamance Burlington future alumni. Joseph runs cross-country, can I say that one again? Joseph runs cross-country, swims, and sings in the honors corps. He is a student body president of Eastern, an active member of the North Carolina Association of Student Councils, and is involved in community theater, where he serves as secretary of Studio One Junior Board. Joseph's favorite subject is, wait for it, chemistry. Sorry, lost my place, I get so excited about that. Well, he's a runner, and he loves chemistry, and I'm like.
You're a match.
Because, he loves chemistry because it plays such a fundamental role in our understanding of the natural world. His plans are to go to college and major in chemistry with a possible minor in biophysics. He believes so many critical technological advancements can be attributed to discoveries in these fields. If Joseph's had, if Joseph had advice for all of the students in ABSS, it would be to start the college or vocational interest search early, as soon as you enter high school. If he had advice for the superintendent and the board, it would be to make sure STEM programs continue to be widely advertised, funded in the coming years. He has been the intellectual, he has seen the intellectual passion they foster here in our system. So Joseph, thank you for that, and, and you have some more that you're going to share with us.
I do, yeah. So my presentation is on middle-level student council resources, and I will be focusing on how everyone can get involved. So my objectives, if you will, for this presentation are to, A, outline the resources available for starting a student council at the middle level; B, outline the opportunities available to involve student council members; and C, offer insights to the relationships between middle school and high school leadership programs. So I'm going to talk about myself for a second. So yeah, again, my name is Joseph Anka, and I've been involved with student council since my freshman year. I've held four domestic positions, so at my home school, I've helped four positions, and two state positions since my freshman year. Currently, I am student body president, as he said, at Eastern Alamance High School, but I'm also the State Secretary of North Carolina. And my most recent endeavor was actually last weekend, I presented at the Western District Workshop. So, um, sorry. My work has taken me places in North Carolina, such as Charlotte, Fayetteville, Columbia, didn't know that was a place in North Carolina, turns out it is, Mount Airy, and New Bern. And so, in addition to these incredibly exotic destinations, student council has taken me places like Minneapolis, and also, wait for it, Rapid City, South Dakota. I'm still trying to find a way to get student council to take me to like Bermuda or Cabo San Lucas, but if anyone has any ideas on that front, let me, let me know afterwards. So where did it start for me? So I went to an interest meeting in September of my freshman year because all of my friends were going. That was it, that was literally it. I didn't want to sit alone in the lobby in the gym in the morning, so I went. And, but once I was there, and you know, it took, it took a few meetings to really, like, to really discover my passion for student council, I realized what a pivotal role student council played in the planning of school-wide affairs. And that ranges from everything, from homecoming to peach fuzz, which is just like fun and silly, and like that is everything that I think student council should be about. So I, I figured out that this was one, this was going to be one of my passions, and I just, I just went for it. I ran for freshman class president, and it only went uphill from there. So this is me at my first state convention, and this was in 2016 at Terry Sanford High School in Fayetteville, North Carolina. And so that's me in a blindfold, that's Michael Jordan, no big deal. And those are my beautiful advisors, Ms. Cannell and Ms. Edwards. So this really opened my eyes to like what the, the potential I could, that I had as a representative for my school. And I, I thought, well, I want to see more representation from both Eastern Alamance and Alamance County as a whole on the state board. And so I have run for two positions in my time. Last year, I held the position of communications officer, and this year, I hold the position of secretary. As communications officer, I basically just manage social media, communicated with the board, and I think it really transitioned very well into the role I hold now, which is secretary. As communications officer, I was constantly communicating with the secretary to release newsletters, which is something I do now, in addition to planning for board retreats, the likes of which I will be hosting at Eastern Alamance High School on Saturday, November 3rd. So, um, sorry. The affiliations between ABSS and NCASC are more formal than one might think. So Alamance County holds three of 18 board positions on the executive, on the state executive board. And this means we are a more prominent county than that of Cumberland County, which is, there's a statutory mandate that outlines that all middle and high school student councils must be involved on the state level. So the fact that we don't have something like that at the moment and are still so heavily involved with representation on the state level is, is really remarkable. And so yeah, me, Alex Pardue from Williams, and Zach Clemmons from Southern all hold a position on the board. And it's been really great to see that transition because I ran my sophomore year, and then they both ran along with me for, for last year. So it's been really cool to see how Alamance County has transformed in that, this manner. So in September of last year, I, I didn't get to go this year, it was very sad, I had the opportunity to serve as a junior counselor at the NCASC middle-level workshop. So the goal of the middle-level workshop is to, is to facilitate the transition between middle school and high school leadership. As I was told when I got to high school, everything gets bigger, and that's a very ambiguous statement. So I, I wasn't really sure what to, how to interpret that, but I think it is a very good statement, now that I'm at high school, everything gets bigger. Everything that is available to you in middle school becomes more extensive, the opportunities become more plentiful. So there are more things, but there are also so many additions to outlets you were already And so any student in grades six to nine is eligible, is eligible to attend the workshop. So I know that sounds like a weird grouping of grades because it's six to nine, but I think the, the presence of ninth graders at this workshop is, is pivotal to the mission of the workshop itself because ninth graders offer valuable insight to, to the transition they are currently going through. It, it happens in September, as I've mentioned, and so they're, they have just enough time to kind of like settle down. think the presence of ninth graders at this workshop is pivotal to the mission of the workshop itself because ninth graders offer valuable insight to the transition they are currently going through. It happens in September, as I mentioned, and so they have just enough time to kind of like settle down, figure out the structure, the hierarchy of their student council at high school and just really observe what's going on as they move between these outlets. So the tenets of the workshop are hands-on learning, application of logic to leadership scenarios, and comfort with lack of familiarity. Delegates will be challenged mentally, physically, and sometimes emotionally. And it is an entry-level flagship workshop, so it's tailored to help, it's tailored to help delegates discover their personal strengths. I had kids that should not have come back, did not come back, and they discovered that it was not right for them. And that's what this is all about. It's about discovering what you're good at as a leader. I had one, because I was a junior counselor, so I had like a large string of screaming middle schoolers that were just kind of like following me around everywhere. It was a lot more fun than it sounds. But I had one that ran away from me. I had one who cried the entire time. It's a really great program because it allows you to cry the entire time. Like it won't, like people won't judge you for that. And so that's kind of the important thing about having such an entry-level program like this. So involvement with the NCASC complements pre-existing leadership initiatives in Alamance County. I don't know how this extrapolates to other schools, but I know when I was in middle school, the two prominent leadership programs were A.L.A. and National Junior Honor Society. So these both offer lots of resources to middle school students. And so A.L.A., for instance, is a big network within Alamance County. And National Junior Honor Society offers maybe not a network, but at least offers access to resources on a national scale. But what NCASC does is it breaks, it kind of takes like a happy medium of that and it offers you a really close-knit network of people that you'll be seeing and you'll be seeing at all kinds of different events, talking to friendships that have lasted me my entire four years as a high school student. So they really complement the leadership initiatives that we already have going in Alamance County. I think leadership is interdisciplinary and this really demonstrates that. So how can middle school educators implement a successful student council network? Well, the most important things that I feel like need to be addressed here are that, first, one advisor must be pinpointed as, I don't know if it can just be a teacher, but one willing advisor must be identified because every good, solid student council is dependent upon one highly spirited, highly patient individual to deal with all the intrinsic issues of having a student council. I have gradually seen all the problems that come with having a student council at your disposal, you know, since now that I'm student body president, I get to see that a lot and I have to deal with it a lot and that's a lot of fun. But you have to have that one person that is willing just to ride or die for student council and I think that is so important. And also, middle school educators should know that there is a network here. All Alamance County high schools are affiliated with the NCASC by means of membership. So they have, I believe every school in our county has sent a delegation to at least one event this year and we actually, next weekend, we have our Central District Workshop, which we are hosting at Williams High School. So there are lots of resources. We have a lot going on at the high school level, so middle school advisors will have access to that. And so how can high school advisors foster the creation of such a network? It's very important to acknowledge that without a good high school advisor with kids coming in from middle school, there won't be much success with the program once the kids get to high school. So I think it's important for high school advisors to reach out to middle schools and make sure that there is at least a fair amount of knowledge present among the student body in a middle school so that they know that when they get to high school, that this is what is at their disposal. You know, I had to sit in the gym lobby until I realized that I wanted to go to student council and do something with my life in high school. But it doesn't have to be that way. I think these kids are the most socially adept kids I have ever met, like despite the few that cry and run away from me. These are really, really good kids with a lot of, with a lot of abilities that I just didn't have in middle school. I think I would be a totally different person today, or at least going into high school, if I had been exposed to this as a middle schooler. And so my information, this is just my email, so I don't know why I sent my information. My email is joeabankco@gmail.com. If you want any of these like more formal resources, I have a folder that just sits on my computer, very rudimentary, but I can spruce it up, send it your way. And here are two QR codes for anyone interested in scanning right now. This is from NCASC, so the state organization. The one on the right is from the National Student Council database. I know for a fact, because I went to the national conference this summer, they have a lot of really, really good resources online and they tailor their content from all of the state student council organizations, which there are 50 of. And they make their portfolio based on what they feel is the best of the best of the state work. So yeah, that's really all I have and if there are any questions, if you feel that I haven't addressed one of the goals I expressed at the beginning of this, feel free to...
Well, Joseph, I really wish you had a little more enthusiasm about this. I think you've done a wonderful job presenting what student council can do, particularly in developing leadership. So we appreciate your hard work and we hope to see that that will continue as you go on to further your education. And certainly if the board has any questions for Joseph or comments.
Great job.
Great job. Thank you for being here. At this time, we will move into board comments and then we'll come back to you in case you have anything to add. And I'm going to let Mark Payne go first this evening since...
Since I got a plaque.
Yeah, you got the plaque.
You mean, hold your plaque up while you're in?
I wanted one last chance to talk and so I actually wrote this down so that I would be succinct and not meander and wander around like I used to at my old band concerts when I was talking to the parents. But first of all, there are only a few rules to public speaking and they're basically to be brief and then to be seated. But I'm already sitting, so I'm going to go ahead and launch into this. This election season will end my tenure on the board and so while I can still talk as much as I want, knowing full well the next time I address this august body, I will be limited to three minutes. I have just a few things to say. First of all, I want to salute each and every person in this school system who's taken on the mantle of working with and serving kids. There is no greater calling than the work of shaping young lives. I would also like to thank the central office staff for their hard work in these challenging times. Trying and succeeding to move curriculum and instruction to higher standards for all of our students is tough and it's often a thankless job, but your commitment to excellence is unparalleled. Finally, to my colleagues on the school board, thank you so much for the work you do and still have left to do in coming years. Steve, Tony, Patsy, Pam, Allison, Brian in spirit, you are an inspiration and a treasure that cannot be readily appreciated because so little of your work is visible to the general public. Let it suffice that for those of us who are in the know, there is an abiding regard for the work that you do to help the kids of Alamance County. Public service is not always easy or pleasant, but the goals are worth the effort and one can readily admit the end results are always aimed to improve our schools for the kids they serve. Many years ago, a beloved faculty member at Williams High School passed away unexpectedly overnight. A man who was fit, young and strong was gone in an instant. This was before mass social media and texting and cell phones and so phone calls were made to all of us on the faculty, but few students knew anything until the school day started. The day that followed was an ordeal for all of the high school students especially who struggled to understand and cope with the tragedy. My band class was at the end of the day and honestly, we tried to rehearse and then finally gave up and began to talk. The kids wanted to do something for this beloved man, you know, like the normal things, like start a scholarship fund. They wanted to name the field house in his memory. Those were some initial thoughts and they kept asking me what I thought we should do. And this is what I suggested. Someday, you will be in a position to help a child or not. In that moment, the thing to do is to stop what you're doing and help. When a young person is in need, there is no greater calling than to give them all the help and support that you can and in so doing, you have helped change the moment, the day, our community, and even the world. That is how you can honor the memory of a great teacher who passed at too young an age and a wonderful way to honor every teacher who has touched yours and other lives through the years. The question now is, are we willing to step up as citizens here in Alamance County and head towards the finish line in regards to making this one of the best school systems in our state and country? Part of the solution is an ongoing process that began this past week. That gum and I lost my little sticker fell off and so it's gone, but I did vote already. Your vote is one of the most powerful tools available to support and enhance public education. When we vote, we take the hand of every child in our county and with our decisions, we'll be shepherding them towards a brighter future or inversely, denying them the advantages other students have simply by marking a ballot that excludes their interests. Please take to heart the simple fact that children cannot vote, they cannot choose to improve instruction, improve support, and maintain and improve facilities to help themselves. They cannot choose where they live, they cannot choose parents who love them, they cannot choose a strong support system and a great socioeconomic standing. But we can choose to vote for a path that will support our kids and back up the needs of our aging facilities. Please keep in mind that by taking a stand now, we will all be part of a team that prepared our school system for the future now instead of once again kicking the proverbial can down the road for some future constituency to consider. There are many forces in the universe, but working with and educating children defies many of the scientific precepts that would seemingly come to bear. After 31 years of teaching, I can tell you, every day of every year, something different came into every room that I was teaching in because kids are creative and energetic beyond comprehension because none of us can remember it. Do not get me wrong, the collection of data and objective, well-defined scores and comparisons are extremely important, but there is and always will be more to teaching than the objective information gathered. Teaching is one of the highest art forms that can be imagined. Managing a well-run, engaging classroom is no less an art than interpreting a Mozart concerto or dancing a ballet or painting a picture. To connect with and hold the attention and imagination of a roomful of students is a masterful stroke of artistic and humanistic ability. Teachers already know this and anyone who observes what happens in our classrooms every day will see and appreciate the same thing. There is a great problem coming sooner than we think though. Our colleges and universities are now faced with the smallest incoming populations to their schools of education in history. Who can blame students who have to gauge the high cost of education against the possible return in the profession they have chosen? My wife and I have nearly 70 years of teaching experience between us and despite very successful careers, could not afford for our own children to go to the college where we met. Being a teacher is truly an art form. It is a science. It's a calling and a noble vocation, but realistically, one must also consider that a young teacher could face $40,000 to $100,000 of debt on day one of a job that demands every ounce of their ability and commitment and yet has a starting salary somewhere in the ballpark of $35,000 a year. I would like to venture that we endeavor to give our teachers the best salaries and perks possible through a local supplement that honors and continues to strengthen our ability to retain the best and brightest of a now shrinking pool of excellent candidates. I've always found it fascinating that in a country that is so driven by sports, where being number one, and don't get me wrong, I love sports, is always on the horizon, where being champion is an elusive but always sought-after goal. But nowhere in the sports world is being number one and a champion expected realistically every year. State titles and national championships will not happen every year, but to strive and work towards that excellence always endures as a daily marker. Teaching is different. Hard work and effort are not as readily measured and seen in the classroom, but that intense attitude of excellence in how we teach and reach our kids is a positive force, not unlike a drive to a national championship, except for one difference. It does have to happen every day, week, month, and year. Every day in the classroom has to be a home run. The teachers in our schools are amazing. They're dedicated and uncompromising in their work as they help kids become part of the greater Alamance County community, state and nation. As members of this same community and team, all Alamance County constituents must be uncompromising in our demands on this school system, but as well, make sure this demand is also meted out with the support that will guarantee that our schools and especially our kids, the best possible outcome. I know the bond is on everybody's mind this election season and that number, $150 million, is huge, but one must remember that that figure will be paid out over a span of years by all of us in our county through multiple sources. The best way I know to look at the bond at a personal level was touched on by our county manager in a recent interview. The ABSS bond will cost the typical homeowner in Alamance County about $118 a year if they live in a $150,000 house. If we pass the quarter cent sales tax, that will actually be reduced. That same homeowner would have about $64 added to their annual tax on their property. This is not per month, this is per year. And sometimes this information gets very discombobulated in the media and it's difficult for people to understand. So I'm going to talk to you like I really am. I am not a financial whiz. You can look at my bank account and find that out instantaneously. I do not know about anyone else, but I pay my bills by the month and those calculations without the sales tax, in other words, if the sales tax part didn't pass but the bond does, that's $15.16 per month. If the sales tax passes, it changes. It'll be $5.34 per month, which is like a buck 20 more than a cup of coffee at Starbucks. With this added benefit, 60% of that sales tax is not paid by any of us. It's paid by people driving through Alamance County, down Highway 40 and spending money all over. And the other thing to remember is that sales tax is not on our gasoline and it's not on our groceries. So food and gas are excluded. It's a fantastic opportunity. Now I'm going to give you a current calculation on a typical trip to McDonald's. A family of four orders a quarter pounder with cheese, that would be my wife, a double quarter pounder with cheese, that would be me, two large fries, probably should get mediums, two drinks, and I'm going to pretend my girls are young again and say two hamburger Happy Meals because the hamburger Happy Meal is by far the cheapest of the four Happy Meal choices that you have. That would cost $20.52. I checked the prices last night online. That's more than the worst-case scenario for that $150,000 house spent in 30 minutes at a McDonald's. Just something to think, I'm just saying, I guess what I'm trying to say is, remember the hamburger when thinking about what this will actually cost you and I personally. Please remember that we are all in this together to help kids. I would also encourage you to review the excellent and informative article in the Times News concerning the bond that appeared in our paper yesterday. There was a lot of really good information. Finally, there is no such thing as stasis. This is what I was taught. You're either getting better or you're other. You're getting better or you fall into that other category, which we don't want, we don't go there. The work we do today will have ramifications for many years down the road, but no school system can do the work needed without the strong backing of the community it serves. Bury the naysayers who complain about waste and incompetence. After four years on this board, I can vouch for the fact that this is a tight ship and the amazing leadership of Dr. Benson is going to make it even tighter. Facts are stubborn things and are not nearly as easy to relate to the general public as sensational accusations. sensational accusations grounded in false information and easily broadcast with our modern media. Know the facts. Visit our schools and you will be hard-pressed to find anything that resembles the low scores tabulated by ridiculous state grading system that cannot see the good works they're bound and only measures objective data that is easy to study and critique. Study our website and all its links and information. There is a great page on our website about the bond that gives you all of this information in a very well-organized format. In regards to those who criticize without actual facts and observations, I can only remind you of a saying by the great WWII General George S. Patton. He was known for a rather colorful use of the English language, so please excuse me as I paraphrase what he said simply for this meeting's decorum's sake. After all, this is not like other meetings that might meet on a scheduled Monday night that may occur in our county. Patton said, in answering to those who criticize without knowing what is happening in the trenches, "It is far easier to tinkle on a tent than it is to tinkle out of it." If you think about it, it's the truth. People criticize without facts, people demean without study, people look at our school system and without making any effort to understand what's really going on, they come up with some ideas and we have heard and read and seen them day after day. So, always be thinking that. Know your facts and vote soon for our county and the schools that are its future. Remember, as I said earlier, there is nothing in this world more sacred and rewarding than to help a child. We must not allow the decisions that need decisive action to be passed on to some future citizenry while the kids in our charge today are left behind when this great opportunity is rightly within our grasp. Thank you for your indulgence in my last epistle on this board and good luck to all who work with our kids in the years to come. I feel that great changes are on the horizon for our kids and look forward to seeing the results that I know are coming. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve this school system and county. Now, Ms. Madron, if it is okay, would you please put my name back on the sub-list?
Yes!
Okay? Thank you.
That's most said in four years.
Take a while to catch up with you, Pam.
Well, that was quite elegant, Mark. Thank you. We will try to move quickly with your comments. Pam, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, like Patsy said, we attended the law conference last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and of all places I could have went, being on school safety and mental health, I scored big. I was around people I want to be when I grow up. I met three chiefs of law enforcement that presented that were just rock stars. I would like to invite them here, they were absolutely amazing. I would like to thank my superintendent and Dr. Todd Thorpe and Brian Haygood, and I'm not sure if there's one more, that appeared on Olin Campbell on WBAG to take phone calls from some of the quite most interesting people that ever walked the planet. And I would just like to do something real quick. As a board member, I would like for us to raise our hands. If we're going to close Graham High School, would you please raise your hand? If we are going to close Cummins High School, would you please raise your hand? Thank you. Enough said. But I would just always want to do that, just to get it clear out there to some certain set of ears. I met a board member from Brunswick County in the elevator as I was going back up to my room and he was talking about they had so much damage from the hurricane and how one of their high schools was taking in one of their elementary schools and how the high school students did a pep rally for their little bitty ones to walk in, for them to feel anything safe. And he said the high schoolers were just loving, being real mentors, and feeling responsible for all these little children. Empathy, we cannot have enough of that in everything we do. I would also like to thank Mark Payne for sitting beside me and working transfers. Like, I'm just one, you're was too. And so, but I want to thank you, Mark, because you are definitely the definition of empathy and you bring so much to the table because you have definitely been there and done that and there is no better authority than the one who's walked in the shoes. So, I can't thank you enough for that and I'd just like to tell everybody to be sure and vote. We live in a country where we have that freedom and I don't ever want to lose it and let's never take it for granted. So, that's it.
Thank you, Pam. Patsy, we'll come back to you.
A couple of things. This coming up Saturday at Cummins High School, our student support services will be sponsoring Success by Design. It's a great opportunity for your, I think it starts with the 5th grade through 12th grade students to attend a workshop pertaining to just preparing for college. It's free and I think registration starts at 8:30 and it should be over about 1:30. So, I encourage everyone to invite our students to attend. I'm a little bit kind of not here and I think it had to do with the speaker who talked about what she perceived to be bullying and it really touched me. And I'm not sure, but I hope she's been in contact through the appropriate channels. If not, I ask that someone reach out to her specifically. She addressed the issue pertaining to the children, her students or children feeling that the Confederate flag and some racial tension at that school. And I went back and I looked at 4220.4 of our policies which clearly states that any symbol associated with intimidation of any form is in fact violation of our dress policy. I don't want to get into a long deliberation about the statute or a flag, but what bullying is, is how it makes an individual feel. And I would hope that administration will sit down with the principal of that school as well as make contact with that mother to see if we can resolve that issue. If in fact this particular policy, 4220.4, is not specific enough where the Confederate flag would be considered to be an item of intimidation, I request that we, as a board, revisit our dress policy regarding the 4220.4 so that we can make language that clearly states that that would be a violation. So, I would ask that to be on the future agenda if in fact that's not true. You know, it was kind of disappointing because I was so up and excited. Last week at the law conference that we attended, it was all about the students. It was all about, I learned about the multi-tier, that MS, what is it, multi-student support that I see everywhere. And it was about everything from student safety to mental health and how, all of that played an important part and with academic success. And then she stood there and it just sort of, I don't know, in my mind, I was just like, oh, God, I feel like we were 30 years ago and so I'm not feeling good. But there were a couple of things that I would like. Number one, I think the board, we need to look at our policy in regards to our placement at alternative schools. That was a big issue and it clearly, I'm not saying that we're in violation, but we need to immediately look at that because it talked about students only being referred for 45 days to the alternative setting and particularly if they have an IEP. And they talked about a manifestation hearing and we know kids have all these emotional problems and they have oppositional defined disorders and they have all of this and all these manifestation hearings and they go, no, that has nothing to do, he cursed her out, that has nothing to do with their disability. And they were like, yes, it does. So, I think we have really got to do a better job, I think, in this school system where children are being placed out of school due to some of these behaviors and look at other alternative forms. But the biggest one is that principals are according to, and you get with the attorneys, but right now principals can make a referral to the alternative schools without it being, have given the students due process and without it, in other words, a long-term suspension, 11 days or more. And that is clearly not, should not be the case. And I really need for us to take a look at that right now and stop any, if that's untrue, stop any referrals to Race Street Academy that comes directly from the school-based level without a multidisciplinary hearing or without parental consent. And I will be happy to share that information and our attorney was also at that meeting. We need to get on that immediately. And I also need to make sure that the EC department is looking at these manifestation hears and in fact, and making sure the students are not referred beyond the 45-day period of time. And the last thing I wanted to say, there's a school board that's meeting tonight in this Rowan County. And I got this off of Facebook because there's so much discussion about, in particular with teachers, but we know currently right now prospective teachers qualify in one of two ways, having a college degree in education or lottery entry candidate, which is a four-year relevant degree or five years of relevant work experience and 24 hours of teaching and so forth and passing the exam. But there is a new proposal there, it's called a renewal pathway, and I'm not sure if that's the same as the emergency license procedure that we're using, but basically what it says is the proposed change would add a third route to becoming a teacher, which means a relevant degree with no four-year experience, no relevant work experience, and no minimum requirement of a 2.5 GPA. They have to complete orientation. And I thought, what does that say about the profession of teaching? Our teachers deserve better than that. Our children deserve better than that. Our teachers are professionals. And I'm looking at Dawn because she's in HR. If in fact that is lawful in the state of North Carolina, now we as a board need to make a statement to say that that is not acceptable and our students deserve better than that in Alamance Burlington school system. We know it's very difficult to get highly qualified teachers. We're doing our best to get them, but to accept a two-year degree and not in a relevant subject area, that is really lowering the standards and we should not tolerate that. And I'm not sure how that board, but they're voting on it tonight in Rowan County. We're not going there in Alamance Burlington school system. We can do better, we will do better, and I just appreciate our teachers so much and the professionals that they are and that's a smack in the face to our educators. And also, I see Ryan has come in, I wanted to acknowledge Ryan Bogan, who's also one of the candidates for the Board of Education. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Patsy. Tony?
It's like watching Grey's Anatomy and then doing surgery the next day.
Tony, anything?
I just wanted to say thanks to the staff, principal and assistant principal at Hillcrest, and for Dr. Benson and the staff at Central Office that have worked with them to help overcome this challenge and I look forward to seeing the increases in good things happening there and I know they're doing a great job and appreciate all of the intentionality put there. So, and I want to thank Mr. Teeter, our finance guy, who has been inundated with things changing with regard to our classified and our certified staff, vacation and leave time statuses. And so, got some good feedback from staff from your communication and I know you've been doing a lot of work to make all of the weirdness go away. I just appreciate your flexibility and I know that's complicated, so thanks for that. That's all I have.
Mr. Van Pelt?
I've got a few things. First of all, the North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference, November 11 through 13, will be held at the Four Seasons at the Quarry Center in Greensboro. I hope many board members can come to that and will have registered with that. If you still want to register, see Ms. Chandler on Wednesday morning, I believe at 7:30, and that's early, but Free Bird McKinney, our teacher of the year, state teacher of the year, and our local product will be speaking to the assembly. I'll second what Mark had to say in one word, vote. We need to vote. The Closing the Achievement Gap Committee held, invited North Carolina Central University Drama Department in. We saw Sister Act last Friday night, raised some money for our minority students in trying to close the achievement gap. And so, they've been rather, we've been rather active lately. Patsy, agree with you 100% on the teacher licensure. We don't need to lower the bar. We've seen the, we've seen the number of students, college students going to school of education decrease dramatically in the state colleges and universities. And it's, in my opinion, the powers that be in Raleigh have made teaching rather unattractive and that's, they need to find ways to make it more attractive and get those numbers back up. And I don't think, I think I'd have trouble supporting what Rowan County is voting on tonight and I hope they'll reject it. And also, what Ms. Ty Singer said, I have a grandson that's at Southern Alamance Middle School and this thing about bullying, racial slurs, passive-aggressive behavior, Confederate flags, chains, whatever, I think that that's covered under Rule 2 and Rule 25. Patsy, you mentioned that it's 4220, that these are points in 4220, Rule 2 and Rule 25. And as far as alternative school, that's nothing that you undersung. Principals were doing it when I was principal there years ago or wanting to do it. And it's a matter of, there's a process, the principals need to follow it, and I'm through.
So, it sounds like we have some things for work session discussion coming up, so we'll get with you on that. I just want to say thank you to E.M. Yoder. They hosted the board for lunch today. Mr. Van Pelt, myself, Dr. Benson, and Dr. Manus were there today. The school looks amazing and the young people are just right on target, so it was very exciting. We went into a Spanish class and I caught three words, so I thought that was really good. And also, we were over at Hillcrest today for the Harlem Globetrotters' ABCs of Bullying Prevention. It was a great day, they had, it was very exciting, the children were excited, but the atmosphere at Hillcrest is completely a new culture and I'm excited to have Dr. Reed there and her work that she's doing with her staff. So, we thank them for hosting those of us that were able to make it. Thanks, Steve, myself, and again, Dr. Benson, we're there, and Jean. So, thank you to that. So, I will turn the floor to Dr. Benson if you have any additional comments this evening.
Very briefly, Joseph, thank you for being here.
Yes.
Loved your presentation. Good start, so thanks for jumping up there and volunteering to be our first go this year. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Payne, it's been a pleasure.
Short pleasure, but a pleasure.
A short pleasure, but a pleasure and I thank you for being part of the board that brought me to Alamance Burlington. I'm pretty sure you're going to be paying attention to what's going on and we will deliver the goods, I promise you on that.
I'll be back.
Good. And maybe we can get somebody else to call me Dr. B. I kind of like that.
We're going to miss a donkey sound. Yeah, my God, no.
Well, I text Dr. B. when I talk to people, but anyway, we'll start calling you that if that's what you want.
Dr. B., yeah. That's pretty cool.
So, at this time, being no further general business, Tony, you have a motion for us this evening?
Yeah, I just want to say, Mark, thanks for your service.
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
Thank you all. I make a motion, we in a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A3 to preserve attorney-client privilege and North Carolina General Statute 153, 143-318-11A6 to consider confidential personnel information protected under NC General Statute 115C, 319, and 115C, 321.
Thank you, Tony. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Patsy. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are now moving into closed session.
I present to you the October twenty-second Personnel Report and request your approval at this time.
Is there a motion on floor to accept the personnel report?
No.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Patsy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. Thank you, Ms. Madron.
Thank you.
Any further business to come before the board?
Just one other thing. I wanted just to say to Dr. Benson and Dr. Thorpe, what was his name, Michael? Was it the last hurricane that we had? We've had so many.
That would be Matthew.
What's the best?
Michael, Michael, that, just really appreciate you looking out for our schools and making the right call, and you know, there's just so much from the public, but you know, I appreciate you keeping our staff and our students first, and we can take the heat from the public in regards to whether we should or shouldn't do it, but we entrust that you, and I appreciate you going out in conditions that were not safe as well. And I just think that we should be commended for how we handled it the last time as well. So, I want to say thank you.
Snow's just around the corner, Todd.
Jenny says that's her wordy dirt in her library. Okay, so, there's a first, may I have a motion to dismiss?
Make a motion to, we dismiss.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.